I call a meeting of the Boards and Directors, Director's Meetings, order. We do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance and Director Schaefer will follow with the invitation. Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd remain standing and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please look over these proceedings this evening and guide those of us that have to make decisions on important matters in a way that benefits all of our community and anyone involved. We ask you to look down on those that can't be with us tonight for illness, and we hope that this meeting meets the requirements. Thank you.
Amen. Ball call, please.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer. Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
President James Fairman. Thank you.
Those substances have been deemed excusable. Okay, any late communications?
No, Mr. Vice President.
Any ceremonial matters?
None, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. This is a time when set aside for public comment, for persons in the audience to make comments on items within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Members of the public will have an opportunity to address the board about all other items on the agenda at the time those items are considered. Do we have anyone wishing to speak at the public comment now? Do you want to do it on a particular agenda item?
No, I'd like to make a general comment.
You're welcome. Oh, yeah. Please do.
My name is Mark Abrams, resident city of Costa Mesa. Several -- I've been coming to these meetings for probably 10 years, and this is the typical result you get from the public. A few years ago, I had some complaints about CRNR and how they were running their business, and I'd like to know if the Sanitary District is providing this as a freebie to CRNR. This is a mailing that went out to everyone in the city, I would presume. And it just seems odd to me that you guys have like strange bedfellow relationship with CRNR. A few years ago, I was told that CRNR was on its last leg here and that they were not going to be renewing their contract. That has been gone by the wayside long ago. So I'd like to know, is there a plan to find a new vendor for the city of Costa Mesa? And how much is the city -- excuse me, how much is the Board, the Sanitation District, giving to CRNR to do these mailings for them when this is an advertisement for CRNR that they should be paying for? Thank you very much.
Can you answer that question?
Sure. Regarding the flyer, the District does not pay CRNR anything for those flyers. That's part of their contract. So that is one of the stipulations we agreed to in their agreements, that they have to provide that flyer to our residents at no cost to us.
And how long is their contract, their present contract?
The Board of Directors just approved a 10-year agreement with CRNR, so it's a 10-year agreement, and then it has an option for a 10-year extension, so it's a potential 20 years.
And we're one year into it, or?
We're just, yeah, we're in the first year right now. Correct.
Twenty thirty?
Yes.
Or twenty seventy-eight? More or less. I mean, we're in the same ballpark.
Yes.
Okay, we have the consent calendar. Does any Director want to pull any item, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that's item down through one through 12. Now we have a public hearing, consideration of the annual solid waste charges to be collected with the general purpose taxes. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll be considering imposing rates for trash collection. In considering these rates, we will be complying with Proposition 218 and, to a certain extent, with the Health and Safety Code. With respect to the hearing procedures, each of you will be given an opportunity at the appropriate time if you want to make further public comment. First, I'd like to ask the District Council to give an overview of the Prop. 218 procedure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vice President, as you know, Proposition 218 was passed by the voters in 1996 and imposed the substantive and procedural requirements on the district with respect to increasing any fees. Regarding the substantive provisions of Proposition 218, the law provides that each property-related fee must meet the following tests. One, the revenues derived from the fee or charge must not exceed the funds required to provide the property-related service. Two, revenue from the fee or charge must not be used for any purpose other than that for which the fee or charge was imposed. Three, the amount of the fee or charge imposed upon any parcel or person as an incident of property ownership must not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the parcel. Four, the fee or charge may not be imposed for service unless the service is actually used by or immediately available to the owner of the property in question. Fees or charges based on potential of future use of a service are not permitted. Standby charges must be classified as assessments and must not be imposed without compliance with the proportionality requirements for assessments. Five, no fee or charge may be imposed for general government services such as police, fire, ambulance, or libraries where the service is available to the public in substantially the same manner as it is to property owners. In your agenda packet is a staff report. The General Manager will presenting for each charge, in which he will document how each of these tests has been met. The staff report is made available to the public for their review online and in hard copy form. Hard copies are available on the table. Once that report has been presented, you should ask any questions of staff you might have, then ask the District Clerk to provide the status report on whether any protests have been received. The District Clerk is provided notice by mail to all parcels subject to the charges. The law provides that if written protests are presented by a majority of the owners of the parcels, the charges may not be imposed. Since only written protests can be considered, staff has developed forms for use of the protesting owners so that any person wishing to protest tonight can have their vote counted. There are 18,234 parcels that are subject to the charges being considered tonight. If there is not a sufficient protest, the Board may consider whether or not to impose the charge and adopt the proposed resolution. But actually, the resolution's going to occur at a later meeting because we only have three Board members tonight, so we can hold a protest hearing, but we will adopt the resolution if that's the Board's desire at a meeting next month. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to hear from the General Manager as to whether any charges, as to whether the charges comply with the substantive provisions of Proposition 218.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and good evening, Board of Directors and members of the public. The proposed trash collection charges for 2019-20 is $224.88 per dwelling unit for the 2019-20 annual trash collection charge for basic service. The charge meets the substantive requirement for Proposition 218 as follows. As District Council mentioned, revenues derived from the fees or charge do not exceed the funds required to provide the trash collection service. The charges are calculated by adding together the cost of components necessary to provide the service and then apportionating this to those receiving trash collection services. No components other than those directly related to providing the service are used to establish the charge. The components include solid waste collections, disposal, recycling, education, and special programs and administration. Number two, revenues from the fees or charge is not used for any purpose other than which the fee is charged, is imposed. The revenue is not to be used -- I'm sorry, the revenue is to be used only for the components of providing solid waste collection services as outlined, or as I mentioned just earlier a few minutes ago, and is identified in the District yearly budget. The amount of the fee -- number three, the amount of a fee or charge imposed upon any parcel or person as an incident of property ownership does not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the parcel. The amount of the yearly charge is determined by dividing the cost of all components of providing the basic collection service by the number of parcels receiving service, as the vast majority of parcels produce an approximately equal amount of solid waste and all parcels enjoy the benefits of the public education and having opportunity to participate in special programs. Basic collection service is two mixed waste carts and two organic carts. Property owners that exceed the basic service by having more than two mixed waste carts or two organic carts pay added charges in addition to the basic service. The added charges are not collected with the general taxes. Number four, the charge is not imposed for service unless the service is actually used by or immediately available to the owner of the property in question. Properties not receiving solid waste collection service or that receive service from other entities providing solid waste collections are not charged. Number five, no charge is imposed for general government services such as police, fire, ambulance, or libraries, but is only imposed for solid waste collection services. The District provides only solid waste and wastewater collection services, and all charges collected for solid waste collections are used only for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll and Madam Clerk. Have all the appropriate mailings and publicings of notice of this hearing occurred?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Madam Clerk, could you please give us a status report on the protests that you've received to date?
Yes, the District has received 12 protests so far out of the total parcels numbering 18,234.
We will now hear from any person who wants to speak regarding this matter. Remember, if you are protesting charges by law, only a written protest will count. Please make sure that you filled out one of the forms if you have not already, if you want to be included in this protest count. I now open the public hearing on this matter. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If there's anyone that desires to speak.
I want to order, Mr. Vice President, before we move on. We're opening the public hearing for the public. Does the Board, didn't the Board have the opportunity to ask questions before we opened the public hearing?
Sure.
Good, because I do have a question.
Director Schaefer.
I apologize. On those protests, for the benefit of the public, two things. Are the protests done as of today? Is today the deadline? So even though we're voting on the rate change next month, protest cease today?
Correct.
Yes.
And can you just refresh me and the public on the percentage of protests that have to be received in order to overturn our decision?
Would have to be at least half of the 18,234 parcels.
So we need 9,000-plus protests.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
So we've been opening the hearing for public comments right now, Mr. Vice President.
It's pretty quiet in here. I listened to the gentleman speak about the 218 guidelines and the tests associated with that. I'd like to know how the $50,000 donation to the Interim Bridge Homeless Shelter qualifies. That is not an expenditure that the public should be incurring.
I can answer that question. We collect, in what's called the general fund, a certain percentage of the 1% of the property taxes, and the 1% is distributed to those special districts, school districts, and cities, those that have requested it, and some do not. We get about $300,000 a year in what's called, and we put that in what's called a general fund, and that's where we figured out that that money would have to come from and is coming from. So it does not come from either of these two revenues. It comes from that 1% general fund.
So it's a slush fund?
No, it's a general fund. It's a general fund.
Yeah. It's a fund that has more discretion by this Board to spend. It is generally put in one or the other of the two enterprise accounts.
Sounds like a slush fund to me, where you guys can spend however you feel like, without any--
It's rarely spent. Rarely would funds be spent out of that, or be designated out of that.
So is there a reason why there wasn't a public hearing on the donation for the $50,000?
It was noticed on the website, and it was noticed in the agenda, and--
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, can we just add that it was, there were people who showed up and did speak on the matter, and some of these same issues came up, and in addition to it having to come out of what we were calling today the general fund, it also had to qualify as being a district purpose under the statute, and the Board did an analysis and a determination that it was appropriate under the statutory powers that we had, and so the Board did go through that analysis also and made sure it was not a gift of public funds, and that was within one of our statutory authorized powers.
And because we're a sanitary district, I think the logic was it was a public safety opportunity.
So I did read on the website that it was for portable restrooms also being staffed by an individual from the Sanitary District.
I'm not sure that the latter part is true. I don't believe we have any involvement in staffing of the bridge facility, the portable restrooms for the bridge facility.
It says here, "Waste tanks, restocking supplies, and security personnel to ensure the restrooms are being used for their intended purposes." Security for a bathroom.
Security is provided by the city.
Well, it says, "Security personnel to ensure the restrooms are being used for their intended purpose." This is from your website. I think if you got $50,000 to spend, then why are you jacking up the price of the services? And I looked, and I'm actually quite shocked. In two years, this chart is completely outdated because the charges go off the chart. So in two years, it's going to be $157. This chart only goes to $245, so it goes up from there.
Yes.
You know, and I understand that you guys have tried to toe the line and kept the cost down for the last one, two, three, four, five, six years or so. I'm a property owner. You know, people are always hammering the owners, the landlords, why they're raising the rents. This is why, because you're not the only one raising the rates. Everybody raises the rates because you can, and there's no accountability other than maybe 8,000 people are going to complain, and they don't. So I've had the same argument for the last 10 years coming before the Board, being a property owner, and it's appalling that you guys just continue to raise the rates. CRNR is allowed to operate unabated, and whenever there's a question, oh, they have a contract. So who negotiates the contract other than you guys, I guess? You guys must know what you're doing. Why would you do a 10-year contract other than that's what they wanted? I think it's sad that the taxpayers and the ratepayers get saddled with a 10-year contract with no way to get out of it, unless 9,000 people complain. And the only time you're going to get 9,000 people complain is if there is a major issue.
Okay, I think your time is up, but could you wrap it up?
I'm done. I just think it's appalling.
Thank you. Now, now, close the public--
We have one more comment, Mr. Vice President.
Judith, I'm sorry.
Yes. As you heard me talk at the earlier meeting of the CAC, yeah, I'm one who thinks that there's something amiss for people like me in the new amounts of money to be charged. And I was wondering, well, because I'm sure I'm not the only one that's going through a downsizing, and granted, our parcel had five people living on it at one time. We don't have five people living on it anymore, and it could downsize even farther. So did I understand that if you want, if a parcel wanted to opt out, they could opt out of the trash being collected at their home?
I think it's organics. You might be referring to organics.
I'm referring to solid waste and organics.
You can recycle your own, if you don't place it out on the curb, you can't have a competing trash collector come to your house and pick up your trash.
I could take my organics to Orange Coast College, and I could take my trash or deal with my trash myself, and--
And not be billed on the assessment roll?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, no, you can't--
You're going to get billed anyway.
Yes.
Doesn't that sound a little extreme? There should be some fuzz in there somewhere, something, well, in my case, instead of having a family of five, I'm down to, well, not so many, and I'm still being charged the same amount, and the cost is rising. There are weeks that I don't put out any trash or green wastes because I don't have enough to fill my kitchen trash can. And I think I'm not the only one like that in the city. And not only that, but we don't have my husband's income anymore either, you know, for paying taxes and other such things. So what are you going to do about it? I guess I'll have to go back to thinking of things and coming to the advisory committee with the ideas.
I think I'm almost in the same boat. I almost produce no trash whatsoever because I recycle almost everything, and I have a zero-stape yard.
Yeah.
I mean, my trash is about this much in the bottom of the barrel. I still have to pay.
Right. And we're not the only ones.
And, Mr. President, just, Mr. Vice President, I mean, just as a matter philosophical statement, there are certain taxes that are not perfectly fair. I mean, you could have your children grown, and you're still paying a school, taxes to the schools, and, you know, you get a property tax bill, and, you know, you may not be getting a service, but, you know, they're not required to be perfectly proportionate to everybody, just reasonably proportionate, and that's what we've done, and that's what we're required to do. But you're certainly entitled to collect your own recyclables and sell them yourself, but that's, I think that's about the--
Don't sell them to Orange Coast.
--as far as we could go to helping you out.
It's a donation.
Some tax laws are just inherently not perfectly fair to every person.
Yeah, but this is going to keep going up, and my income goes down.
And if I could just make another comment, is that the Board has also looked at, and will continue to look at in the future, looking at proportionality and the charges based on what you put out, but that's a very, it's an expensive engineering proposition, and they haven't done it so far, and, you know, looking at small cans, big cans, things like that, but those are decisions that will be made in the future to try and make it more fair, but not too sure, but maybe in the future.
Thank you. My time's up.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you. The protest fails.
You have to ask, you have to close the public hearing, Mr. Vice President, then you need to ask Madam Clerk, do we have a total number of protests?
I will close, now close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have, do you have a total on how many protests were received?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, the total remains at 12 protests out of the 18,234.
Thank you. The protest fails. It is, it's a district policy that four alternative votes from the Boards of Directors are required to impose these charges, new charges. Since we do not have four affirmative votes at tonight's meeting, I am seeking a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution for the Board to consider adopting on June 27, 2019, that confirms that the new solid waste charges for fiscal year 2019 through '20. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your participation. Next item is preliminary budget review.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So you may recall, on May 14 of 2019, staff presented the preliminary biannual budget to the Board for your review and comments. This is just another opportunity to share the proposed budget to the public and make it available for public comments, and if there's anything that you have thought of since this was first presented to you and wanted to ask more questions or give direction to staff, this is the time to do it.
So any questions in addition to the questions that were posed when we had the last opportunity?
No. Pretty self-explanatory.
I thought we did a pretty good job at the study session to go through it.
Probably the only additional comment I have is, you know, we charge solid waste fund for a portion of this building, and we also have tenants in the building that pay rent for the couple of extra office spaces that we have. I would like to suggest that the solid waste fund be charged a similar rent to the, you know, the tenants that we have in the office. I know they're not, it's not directly proportional. We have, I think, one staff member that's in, that's full-time in the solid waste fund and parts of five others. So I think that we could perhaps work out an equivalency. I know there was a study done that determined what an appropriate charge was. I think in light of the fact that, you know, we have new information, basically, we have a tenant until we, in the future, need to fill those offices, we maybe need to relook at that study. And I think those are the only additional comments. I had several other comments at the study session that I'd like to have staff review. Mike and Art, no more comments?
No. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
We made our comments at the study session.
Okay, item number two, and under the General Manager reports, adopt resolution number 2019, certifying to the Boards of Supervisors and the County Auditor a statement of delinquent and unpaid charges for sewer and other services and requesting the collection with the annual taxes. and requesting the collection with the annual taxes imposing a lien.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Caitlin Tran will be giving his report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Vice President and Board of Directors. In front of you is the resolution number 2019-918, certifying to the board of supervisors and county auditor a statement of delinquent and unpaid charges for sewer and other services, and requesting collection with the tax, the annual taxes imposing a lien. In 2016, the district and CRNR had a discrepancy in the occupancy accounts and billing. The district was paying to CRNR more for occupancy accounts than what were charged on the assessment. Staff spent months auditing records from CRNR and the district accounting system. As a result, it was determined that the district has been providing solid waste and wastewater services to 95 addresses. They were not charged on the assessment. Some addresses have been receiving free services for over four years. However, the district has a limitation of back charge of three years plus one current year. In February 2018, staff notified the owners of these properties by sending out a letter stating the discrepancy and offered a payment plan. Property owners were able to make payment, payments from February 2018 to December 31, 2018, for the amounts they owed. If unpaid amounts were not received by the due date, they would be placed on the fiscal year 2019-20 assessment. Attached to the letter was an invoice and prior property tax bills to show that the district did not submit the charges on the assessment in previous years. As of December 31, 2018, a total of $28,367.04 is still outstanding. Zip A attached outlines the detail by addresses. Also in the report, there are three addresses shown. They've made arrangements with the district to extend the due date. For example, one address made an arrangement to pay $50 a month and another $200 a month to pay, each month until it is paid off. These three addresses are on a payment plan, so they're not on the zip A. Staff is recommending the board of directors to adopt the resolution number 2019-918, so staff can place the outstanding balance on the fiscal year 2019-2020 assessment. And that concludes my report. I can answer any questions?
I have a question. So, we're down to 29 residents that we're gonna be sending this information to the county to?
Yes.
When do we start off? With 90, what?
95. Actually, there were more, but some previous owner owned the place. They moved, and so now we can't place that dollar amount on the new owner, 'cause they, they said, well, I didn't live there during that time. So, there are some that we're still trying to track down, and-
Okay, so we're down to 29 roughly?
Yes.
That's pretty good. And that amount is $28,367?
Yes, that's correct.
So, we've collected a total of $96,000 from this property, from property owners. A total amount to collect is 90, about $96,000.
Yes.
And we've collected a little over, upwards of $61,000. And there's some on a payment plan.
Correct.
And the remaining then will go on the property tax bills.
Yes.
I have a question again. Have we done the same process in the past, Alan, do you remember?
First time we're using this process.
That's what I thought. And is there any cost to us by sending this to the county for payment? They just add it on to their property, they add it on to the taxes?
The county charge a percentage, but that's calculated and deducted out.
Is minimal though, right?
Yeah, monthly.
Are these parcels different than the parcels that we're negotiating with Newport Beach?
No, these are not, those parcels are not including this.
And there's, so there's a small number that we still have to go through this process of collecting potential back charges.
We won't check, we won't collect back charges.
No.
Talking about the ones in Newport that were taking over?
Yeah, there's no back-
I thought some of them, I thought, well, okay, that's my question.
Oh.
Were any of them-
No, no.
Not paying either the, either of the appropriate-
No, they're- They're, I'm incredibly, they're-
Scott, if I may. Those addresses, we bill city of Newport Beach directly, and city of Newport Beach pay us.
They, they, so they're all current?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question. Okay, of these 90 addresses, does that reflect in the $22,787 that we were, you know, occupancy count? Is that part of that or not?
We, we will add these to this year's assessment.
So that'll, the occupancy will be larger? That's my question. Is this already included in the total occupancy count? Or is it gonna go up? Because this is new, new counts.
I, I think it's gonna be the same. Again, we, we were always picking up the, we're always picking up at those homes. We usually weren't collecting cash. So I think the units, the occupancy count will remain the same.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Caitlin, looking through the list, the redacted list with the addresses, it occurs to me there, there's like two addresses, four addresses, they're all like neighbors. Are those the ones that were, like, we, we had them listed as one unit, and CRNR had them as three units? Is that how that comes up, like that?
It could be. Nabila would have a better answer for you. In the report, it states some reasons for it's because of new development. They knocked down one unit, and they built up two or three. And so that's why the system didn't get updated correctly, because of the APN timing.
Yeah, the one in particular on Orange Avenue was A, B, C, D, and E, all of the same address. I would have assumed that one at least was a wrong count, that needed, that was corrected.
Yes, and surprisingly, they're owned by different owners, but none of them answer us.
Well, if I remember right, that's, that's a condominium complex. I'm pretty sure. The other thing is, once we discover that someone has been missed in the past, can I assume that we automatically put them on for the current or the next? I mean, they're on now. We don't, we don't leave them off the process until we get paid. We put them on now so that they're gonna get paid, that we're gonna get paid the current charges, right? Am I saying, Rob Schaefer said yes, so I, I'm not sure if I'm asking it correctly, but-
No, you're, you're right. As soon as we discover somebody's not on the roll, we put them on.
We put them on.
Immediately.
Yeah, but then we go back and bill them for what they missed in the past.
Yes, but the assessment we submit in August.
Right.
And so, that's why we, even though we discover it, but then we still need to wait until August to place them on.
When you give it to the county, right?
Yes, yes.
And then, last question. I'm not very good at math, so you're gonna have to help me. I looked down the list of the solid waste. Everybody gets charged the same per household, right?
Yes.
So there's one, there was one address that's almost $4,000. Well, I do some rough math. We haven't been collecting from those people for a long time, have we? Like, 20 years? You see the address I'm talking about?
Yes, on Eldon, okay.
What is the address?
It's on Eldon. On Eldon. They owe us almost $4,000 for solid waste. So they've been missed for a long time.
It could be they have multiple units there.
I was just gonna say, or they, there are multiple units.
It has to be multiple units, because we can't go back more than four years, so it has to be multiple units.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Okay. I'm not as dumb as I look.
Properties on Eldon can have up to six units.
I know, I know. So I wonder. Okay, thank you.
It could be multiple units and multiple years, so like three years.
I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, so.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
We need to-
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-918. I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? I should know that, since there's three of us. Okay, item number three, under the general manager report, consider creating a policy ad hoc review committee. Appoint two members to serve on the committee. And this, this would be to go over the policies and resolutions and things that we need to go over.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. So every few years, the board has established an ad hoc committee, and that ad hoc committee will consist of a couple of board members and staff if we review some of our policy procedure documents. And I list those, those documents in your staff report. Those documents include the administrative regulations, which is more of an internal procedures. We perform here at, within the organization. We have our operations code, which is basically like the law, like municipal law code. And then you have our employee handbook, which is our, our policy procedures related to personnel matters. And so it's always a good practice to review all these documents to make sure we're all in, up to date with code and state law is, it seems like every year, there's a new law coming down, especially when it comes to personnel matters, so we wanna make sure we're up to date. This year, we're requesting two members from the citizens advisory committee to serve on this ad hoc committee. In fact, last week, they did appoint two members. They, I was gonna keep the name, the- Steven Takahashi and Monty Fields were appointed. So if you appoint two board members, there'd be two board members, two CAC members, and a couple of staffs, and we'll schedule a date and time to meet. The meeting would be open at the Brown Act, so we would post it, and it'll be open to the public. So I just wanna make that aware to you. The past, the last time we had an ad hoc committee was 2015. Director Perry and Secretary Schaefer served on that committee last time, so. Looking for some direction on who you wanna appoint, if you wanna establish an ad hoc committee.
I have a question. Why is it required for the Brown Act notice, because we just have two board members?
Well, we have two board members, we have two CAC members. We're just, we're just saying on a caution, and it's just good, good practice and for transparency purposes. Would you confirm that?
Yes.
Do most, does most of the input come from staff?
Honestly, the last time we had, Secretary Schaefer and Director Perry were very involved. I mean, they actually took the documents, and they read page to page, highlighted everything, and they came back and brought up the issues, and we talked about it. So it's, I think it's mutually driven by both staff.
So, so the, I would, I would think that staff would be more aware of the regulatory, of the legal-
Yes.
The legal requirement changes.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And since we just did a major review with two board members, you know, reading through, you know, the documents, I think that that's probably reasonably up to date.
Well, like I said, it's been about four years since, yeah, since, yeah, 2015, so it's four years already.
The other building was-
I have a comment, you know. That was, that was one of my questions. Do you think this is the right time to do that? And what, did you talk about when the meetings would be held? Would it be during the morning hours?
That would be up to the ad hoc committee. I would, I would, we would, we would, Nalani was sending out an email to the committee members, and we'll find out when's a good time to meet for our first meeting, and then I'll leave it up to the ad hoc committee to find out what's a good standard day and time for everyone to meet.
And we, okay, so, in my case, Wednesday would be the best day for me, I mean, in the morning. But you can survey the other, if I-
Absolutely.
Get a point in my head. So I would be happy to do it.
Great.
You know, there's, I'm not sure if we wanna, we don't have a full board here to make the decision, unless Mike is interested in doing it.
I'd be interested in doing it. I, I think only from the stand that you and Arlene did an excellent job. I mean, really good job, but I think a different set of eyes on it might, might be beneficial. I don't know.
Yeah, if Jim or Bob wanted to do it, I would be happy to step down.
No.
But I mean, I would be available if needed.
No.
But maybe we could, you and I could be appointed now, and then-
If it needs to change, yeah.
Would you, would you, would you mind doing it?
Not at all.
Well, then, I think, I think, you know, as the president in charge tonight, I can, I can appoint the ad hoc committee, Director Schaefer and Art. And then you can work with them to figure out with the other two members. And that'll be noticed as a board meeting.
Yes, thank you.
That would be right here, right?
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay, item number four, under the general manager report, consider approving amendment to Robin Hamers and Associates', Associates' Agreement for Construction Inspection Services.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So before you is an amendment to Rob Hamer Associates' agreement. And this amendment is for, to allow him to provide construction inspection services for both private and public projects. If you approve this agreement tonight, tomorrow, I will send a notice out to Anderson Penna, who's currently doing our inspection process, and I'll give them a two-week notice, so they would stop providing, stop providing inspection services to us effective June 7.
I've read this report. Do we need, do we need any more explanation?
No, I'll, I'll move the approval of the amendment.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does Rob have any comment? Did Rob wanna make, did you wanna make a comment, Rob?
You have three minutes. Consider approving the Priceless Pet Contribution-
You did, Mr., point of order, Mr. Vice President, you didn't call for the question. We just did the second, first and the second meeting.
Call, well, call for the question then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, consider approving the Priceless Pet Rescue Contribution Program application.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Gia Toriano will give you this report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Item E5 is requesting the board's consideration to provide a contribution of $250 to Priceless Pet Rescue, so that the district can host a community booth at their sixth annual PACWOC event. And this is going to take place at T. Winkle Park in Costa Mesa on June 29 at 8:00 a.m. Priceless Pet Rescue runs the orphanage, which is the official animal adoption center of the city of Costa Mesa. They're a nonprofit organization that relies on donations, and they're using this event to fundraise to make improvements to their adoption center in Costa Mesa. They're looking to build an outdoor play yard and purchase a van to transport animals to adoption events. Per CMSD's policy, there must be an established purpose for this contribution that pertains to one of the district's statutory powers. District staff is recommending that the board make a finding that this contribution would advance the district's purpose of recycling and proper disposal of waste by hosting a district booth at the event, where our district staff can distribute compostable pet waste bags and talk to people about the organics recycling program. We can also educate attendees about the proper disposal of pet medications in our medication drop box. So, staff believes that this would meet the requirements for the district's contribution procedures if the board does wish to approve this contribution. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question about, has this event been held in the past?
This is the first time it's being held in Costa Mesa, since this shelter is fairly new.
The shelter in Costa Mesa?
It is.
And what's the expected attendance?
Um-
What's the expected attendance? Because you know, the programs have, you know, they go like for the schools or stadiums, we get tenants all year long.
Right.
We make a donation. This is a one-day event?
It's a one-day event. It's a walk. So people are going to bring their pets and do kind of a, you know, a 5K walk or something, something like that. So I, I believe it states in the staff report, I want to say attendance is expected to be about 1,000 people. But it is the first year that they're holding it here in Costa Mesa.
At T. Winkle Park?
At T. Winkle Park.
This will be the first time in my life I've ever been accused of being a Chihuahua if we give them $250. I'm usually the great dane or whatever.
You're the big dog.
The big dog. Honestly, I'm having a little difficulty with this one. I, I understand the sponsorship. I'm not a pet owner, so I can't tell you that, you know. It's for the $250, we get to put something in their swag bag.
Um, no, that's the minimum amount to hold a community booth. So we would actually have staff there talking to the attendees, giving out, we have disposal bags.
Maybe that's where I'm reluctant because I didn't see that. All I, all I saw when I was looking at their PACWOC sponsorship contract. It says the Chihuahua sponsorship, promote your business, they will promote our business on social media news that are opportunity to include promotional items in the event swag bags.
That was an exception that they made for us. They don't typically allow you to have a booth for 250, but I let them know that we would need something more than just something in the swag bag. Yeah.
Good, good job. I mean, if it's going to meet our purpose, I, I think we need to be there.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
What day is that again?
It's June 29th, a Saturday at 8:00 a.m.
And it goes for how long? Four hours?
Um, I'll have to double check. Probably until about noon.
Depends on how long it takes you to drag a cat through five streets.
Do we provide our own booth?
Um, I believe they provide a table and chairs and we can bring our own, these pop-up.
It might be worth for $250 to see if it's going to be beneficial for us. If we, if they have 1,000 people, 1,000 people.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think I agree. I wouldn't mind trying it for a year as long as... I like the idea of the medication thing. I, I didn't, you know, you don't really think about that, but pets do have a lot of medications. The pet recycle bags, I think is, and we have those, don't we, those little?
We do, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Um, I'll, as reluctant as I was, I will move that we do the sponsorship for $250, providing we have a presence at the event. I do believe it meets our purpose in terms of informing the public on the medication disposal and the, the waste.
And the flag disposal and the meds, the bow hazards and the flags.
Yeah. Okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider approving Costa Mesa High School Football Boosters Contribution Application. I believe this is an application for either one or two banners. I think we have an existing banner there. And they've suggested a proper rotation for, I think, a second banner. Any discussion by the director?
Well, we've typically done the 500 to the high schools to get the banner at their football stadiums, right?
Yes, and they use it for track.
Yeah.
And soccer.
It seems like Mesa came to us last year with the same proposal, right? And we gave five, we only did the one?
Yes, they always ask for up to 1,000 for two banners. As I mentioned in the staff report, we do have a limited budget for sponsorship. So staff is recommending just the one banner, same as we do for Estancia High School. Um, we do have an existing banner for the organics recycling program, but I did design a new banner that's attached to the staff report. The new banner is at Estancia already, and so we're proposing to use that one.
Will, 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 we will replace it or they will replace it?
We already have it. We'll just, do we take it to the school? Do you take it to the school and let them put it in?
They replace it for us. So they have the banners made.
So you did this banner that's in the report?
Yes.
Good job.
I just did the artwork and they'll, they'll make it.
I mean, you can't get any more recyclable than that. So I think that, that gets the message across.
And that facility's used all the time. Cause I was there for T-Ball when there was something going on in the stadium. So we get a lot of bang for the buck, I think.
Do I have a motion then?
Make a motion to accept the $500 donation. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Engineer's reports. Receiving file the monthly capital improvement project report. Do the directors, do any of the directors have any questions about that report?
No.
Seeing none, I'll deem that received and filed. Treasurer's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We don't have anything to report this week.
Attorneys reports.
No, Mr. Vice President, we have nothing for the good of the order tonight.
We'll go on to local meetings. Let's see, the first one is Orange County Sanitation District. I attended the meeting last night and the meeting itself was extremely short. Had a lot of things to do with the air quality management district and their central generation engines and capital improvement projects. Before the meeting though, was the honor walk and there were, there were two, two honorees. I, I was not able to make it to that. They were Ingrid Helbrun and Chris Servalon, both of whom made a lot of contributions to the sanitation district. And so they, you know, they, they got to talk a little bit, talk with friends. And they were, they were, they were, they have a little, little concrete plaque in front along with probably 30 others since this program's been in, in existence. There were, there were items from the Operations Committee and the Administration Committee. None were pulled from the agenda. They were all unanimously approved. And then we heard from the Spirit Committee. I sat in on, you know, that, that meeting took probably 15 minutes. And then I was there for an hour and a half for the closed session. They're dealing with the acquisition of property for a new administration building. And there was a long lawsuit discussed. And there was a third item, which, which I can't remember what it was, but you can look at the agenda if, if you're interested. And let's see, what other meetings can we have?
I, I'm up next with Sarf. Okay, I, I left the Sarf meeting at 5:00. It was still going on, so I could make it here to this meeting. Uh, the main thing was they had a call, we had a call into Jim O'Connell, the chairman, he's our advocate in Washington. And he gives an update on the next few years. The original budget that went to the legislative group was going to try to be reduced by one-third. But the Congress increased the Corps of Engineers by 5%, which is pretty good. They have the money, Corps has full funding to, to complete the dam by 2023, so it's coming to an end. The main thing is, and he told us that they, there's remaining 255 properties at a cost of 157 million dollars. But they said that the county has the money to take care of that now. But they're in the process of being finished with purchasing all this by 2021.
County, Orange or Riverside?
Well, all counties together.
Oh.
It's, cause it's, it's a San Bernardino, Orange County and Riverside. But they have the money, it's mostly the Flood Protection Agency that is in Orange County that's running the whole thing.
You know, the, the, there was a big deal on the news the other day about the dam.
Talked about that.
Oh.
Okay, we talked about that. Okay, so their plan is over the next three years, they're going to purchase all the land behind it. Or they'll go into condemnation for the ones that they can't get. But there's 255 properties. But the ones they've acquired to date were all the large properties. So this, they think, and that was my direct question after her report, do we have the money? And he said, yes, we have the money. Which, this project may be completed, they said, by 2023. But then our chairman said it's probably going to be 2025, but it's coming to a close. Okay, and then the thing that you're referring to is the thing in the register about dam safety at Prado and Whittier Narrows. It went from a two to a three for safety reasons. And at, at Prado, it's because the spillway, which is an old spillway, has some cracks in it. Which it's not, it's, it's going to be fixed. And the Corps has some money to fix it. But that was, it said, no big deal, no big deal. But, cause they have to make an inspection every year and...
Is that the spillway that was painted with?
Yeah, yeah, that's a spillway. It's a spillway. And they can't raise that until they purchase all the land behind the dam.
Oh, okay.
So then, okay. Cause there's two to three-foot voids in the spillway, which is a void, I guess, it's a crack or a hole or something, but that can be repaired. Okay. Okay, the RUTA bill for the Westminster Watershed was supposed to be completed now, but it's not going to be, the study's not going to be completed to 2020. So that's another year away. Let's see. The Corps has excess money to take care of any problems right now. So they're in the process of taking care of, you know, buying the land, kind of raising it in the spillway. So at that point, he gave a report, if anybody wants to look at it, I have it right here, about all the things that they've completed. They've completed like eight out of the nine jobs that they had. And they've completed the trench around the, there's a women's prison out there, they've completed that. They've completed a number of things already. So they're in the final phases right now. So I thought that was a pretty good meeting. They got good information for us. So the budget is going to stay the same, $1,300 per agency. I think there's 22 agencies now. And they have an excess money right now because they haven't spent it on travel, because RUTA, who's our new representative, is on that committee. And we don't, they don't have to travel far. They're just going to meet with them on, I think, at the first week of June. They're going to meet with them to talk about the needs of the district. And our, and our main, main people, you know, will be meeting with them. Okay, so that's my report on the Sarf meeting. It was pretty good. I was pretty happy with that.
Mr. Doug?
I had a root canal the night before, so I missed the meeting. Um, then...
It's honest, it's...
Director Daker is not here for the C is David, DA report. Do we have any other meetings qualifying for reimbursement under?
Yes.
Yeah, I do. Let me talk about SDRMA real quick. We had our board meeting in early May. Basically, this was, this is the time of the year where we go over our financial position. And I'm happy to report that we're in a very good financial position, so we can, we can take out the things we need to. We're going through with a new, with a new Chief Executive Officer, Laura Gill. We're going through a lot of changes and revamping of some things that have happened in the past in SDRMA. That I think are really good, stuff that needs to be done. And we're finding some things that were done previously that, that need to be enhanced or corrected. So we're doing that. I also, last week, or week before last, no, last week I guess it was. I was asked to attend for SDRMA, the, a meeting with the staff at the Olivit, Oliven, how do you say it?
Oliven.
Whatever it is, Water District. There's a, I had told you before when I went to Ventura River that there's a insurance group that's trying to go after mutual water agencies, taking them away. So we met with this staff down there. I think they have a lot of money down there. I mean, they're, it was a very informative meeting and we talked about why they should stay with SDRMA. Uh, but they are re, have you ever, have you, when you worked at, did you ever go to their facility? It's, you know, it's in, out near La Costa, it's in the back of Carlsbad. They are completely rebuilding or rehabbing their entire facility. And the facility looks nice to me, but like I said, Water District's, they seem to have, they've been around a long, long time too, so interesting meeting. And then for SDRMA, I will be leaving on June 8th, I think, the Sunday, for the Public Agency Risk Management Association Conference. I'll be gone for that week. Is that Sunday? Then back on, uh, so we're attending the conference in Orlando, Florida.
That's the biggest convention city in the world.
Well, we're staying at this place called the Gaylord Palms Hotel. And I remember when former Director Fitzpatrick and I and John went to Nashville. We stayed at the Nashville Gaylord. It, it's like unbelievably big. And it's all under one roof. I mean, it's huge, so. And I'm sure we'll sneak across the street to that theme park that they have there too, so.
I, I had to pay my own way there.
I'm glad you did. I have a question, Mr. Vice President. We don't have a CSDA report. But I wonder if our, our attendees at, at Legislative Days could give us a five-minute report on Legislative Days. Is that okay, Bob?
Sure.
For three minutes.
I'm Vice President.
Vice President Newton, is that okay?
So Gina and I did have the opportunity to attend with Director Schaefer, or Secretary Schaefer, sorry. When we went to Sacramento, we just returned yesterday. It was the most highly attended Legislative Days to date. They had over 220-plus attendees this time around. CSDA's goal was to have us be distributed to as many offices as we were able to attend. And so we were paired up with some representatives who were not in our district. And we were able to switch that around with a couple of other member agencies to be able to see Senator Mor, or Senator Morlock and a certain member, Cotty, Peachy Norris. And it was wonderful. Great experience, very productive. And we did some good work up there, so.
Were both, were both of them there? You get to see them?
We got to meet with Cotty, but Senator Morlock was actually on the floor that day. So we got to meet with his chief of staff.
He did make the reception that night.
Yes, he did, as he always does.
Lovely picture of you guys in CSDA's Facebook feed.
Thank you. We were told the same thing.
Except why did that one person, why was she in the picture?
She was a member of our group. She was actually our group leader.
Makes sense. Not a surprise.
Did you feel a little uneasy about being directed by them where to go and not going to the ones that we normally go to? Did you feel uneasy about that?
No, not so much uneasy. I think that we understood the, the purpose, that they wanted everybody to just kind of be able to advocate in as many offices as we could. But it would have been nice to be able to meet with our own representatives. And we made that happen anyway, so.
Good, good job.
Cause I would be upset if you couldn't, you know?
Yeah, I...
Because that was the reason that we liked to go up there is to meet with our representatives.
We did put that on our feedback after the meeting, so.
Cause that's, that's been their intent the last five or six years is you go where they want, but we always went to where we thought was best for us, you know, so just a thought.
It worked out.
This thing was three days this time instead of two days?
Two days. It was two days.
Was it today? It wasn't today, was it?
No, it was on Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you guys going.
I have a, okay, two months ago I went to the Historical Preservation Committee and I gave them those cards that we made, those postcards. Do we have more of those?
Yes, I ordered more. I have plenty if you want to.
Okay, I'd like to take some for their next meeting, but this meeting is really unique because they talk about identifying Costa Mesa notable residents. And right now they're looking at Wing Lam, Charlie Priest, Les Miller. So I know who Charlie Priest is, but a lot of these people on this committee are young. Don't know who the players are that passed, you know, working in, passed this through the city. So at the previous meeting I went to, I suggested Mike Schaefer. And so he is now going to be interviewed by one of the committee members as a notable person in the community. And I thought he would be a good representative because of your involvement with the city, sanitary district, Little League, all kinds of things, so.
Thanks, sir.
I gave him, the person that's supposed to interview him, the phone number to contact, but I don't think he has.
He hasn't contacted me.
So I'm, if, if he hasn't contacted you by the next meeting, I'll take that information in for you.
That's fine, whatever you want.
The guy that's supposed to interview him is like 95 years old. And I don't, I don't, he's, he's just, he was supposed to notify you the next couple of days, but that's been two, three weeks from now. Okay, then they're looking at, you know, I don't know, they have, well, they, one of the things they talked about is they have photos that they'd like to put out. But there's no places that they can put them that's not going to be agreeable. But I... no places that they can put them that's not going to be agreeable, but I told them that we might have some spots that we would use the photos. So did you talk to Gina about that discussion?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so I was, I was thinking, because remember when we last ended our photos, we had six or seven left, I thought, that we didn't put any on, so if you could research that for me and we could work with them in putting the photos up from the Historical Society, that would be pretty nice, because they, they said they're, they're not allowed to do it with who they're working with, so I said, we may have some.
Art, could you go over those three names again that were?
Okay, it was Charlie Priest, Wing Lamb, we know Wing Lamb, that's, you know.
Wahoos.
Wahoos, and then Les Miller, who was our, my principal at Costa Mesa High, he was a former Lions Club, so they are researching those three. And then at the conclusion of the meeting, I threw out Rod McMillan's name, I don't think, yeah, Rod McMillan, he ran the boys' club for years and he ran the Harbor Area Baseball, started that for years, that was at Luke Davis Field, and we all participated in that. But they, since the group is so young, there's not that many people to know who the past players are, so I was throwing out names to them. But, and then they, how they, they just, this is a website, like you take a look at, they say they can get a lot of information out on it, WW CANBA, I've never heard of it, but they said this, they put a lot of information on it. I don't know if that's the correct one or not, but that's what I wrote down. I was thinking that we could put our 75th anniversary on that website, that was my thinking.
Canva.
Canva, have you heard of that?
Yes, it's a graphic designing website that's free use, I use that to create art.
I do, so I thought maybe that's something that we could use for the 75th anniversary. Have you done that at all with that?
I've used it for a couple of ours.
Okay. Then, let's see, they're also recognizing Costa Mesa businesses, and I should have said sanitary district 75th anniversary, but they're recognizing a Little Pickle, a Harbor Glass, Theodore Robbins, so they're looking into those, and the Growers Ranch, they've been there, I guess, 50 years, so.
Really?
So I thought, you know, it's a unique group of people and they run the meeting pretty well and they have someone from the city to help them run it, but it was pretty good. That's, that's my report.
Let, you know, the check presentation, I know Nabil is not here, but the check presentations, I don't know about you guys, you two, I really enjoy doing those. I mean, the kids get so excited and I think they get the most excited when we hand them that big, we give them the big check, you know, they all go nuts for it. And I want to thank my fellow director, the vice president, for giving me one of your punchlines about the, the elephant. Yeah, that was...
Yeah, that came from the elephant in the room.
Yeah, it was the elephant. The only, the only problem with these check presentations is why do they have to have flag deck at 8 o'clock in the morning?
I went at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
I saw it.
I was up by then.
And I think tomorrow I'm at Ray School, one of my old schools.
That's one of my old schools.
Yeah.
I'm a mother. I was there before you though.
Long before me.
Any other meetings?
No, sir.
That's it, I think that's good.
Old business, any old business? New business? Oral communications and directors comments? Do either of the directors have any oral communications or comments?
Just thank you, your, our wonderful staff.
I got one comment. Okay, the Lions Club is going to have their first golf tournament on, on September 30th at Costa Mesa Golf Course and this is the first time that we're trying to raise money because we're going to be losing money when we move from Fairview Park to the Lions Park because all of our banners that we have and all of our things that we advertise with are all posted for Fairview Park. So the city is allowing us to have the golf tournament at the, and we're not going to have to pay this first year because it's going to cost us, we figure 10 to 15,000 to replace everything we have and, and we're, we haven't agreed to move yet, but I think that's one of the things that they're throwing out to us as a possibility. So we haven't finalized any contract with them, but we're, that's what our plan is right now. And we'll have the dinner right after the tournament at the golf course and we expect, expect a, probably a full field, hopefully. Mike knows probably 100 golfers right now.
I hope.
But I just thought I'd throw that out for information. It's going to be a pretty good event, I think. And then, you know, tomorrow's the Library Duncan, Donald Duncan Library presentation. Are you speaking, Bob?
No, Phil is for the Lions Club.
Phil is for the Lions Club.
I'm not the president of the Friends of the Library anymore, but as a side note, also then, the Friends of the Library have been raising funds for four outdoor musical instruments that are going to be installed at Masonry Library. I think they're professional grade instruments, but they're, they're made to be outdoors, they're in Arizona and in places where it snows and whatnot, so they'll hold up under our weather and we, we have just completed raising funds of about $18,000 in private donations for those four instruments. We'll, we'll give them to the city and they'll install them. Hopefully that'll be announced tomorrow and that's at a separate library, it's a Masonry Library. We intend to have contests and things for the use of those. My suspicion is it'll be an enormous draw for the library.
Can you explain what those are? Are they out there permanently?
Yes.
And what, how would they function?
Well, they're the kind of, one's kind of a vertical xylophone, the other is a horizontal xylophone, and there's a set of drums and I forget what the fourth one is.
Can the public just walk up and start playing?
Yes, and they're adjourned at any time of the day or night. And so we'll have contests amongst schools and we may have, you know, Mesa Water District that contests pick four musicians from sanitary districts.
Well, we've got Gina there.
I can't wait, I can't wait to take one of my granddaughters over there to the drums, that's going to be outstanding.
There'll be five little drums and there'll be, then the three other instruments and they'll all have beaters, mallets or whatever the, you know, the appropriate name for the method of playing.
Can these be, can they be taken away? I mean, they're going to be permanent?
They'll be permanent, they'll be there?
Will they be, they won't be there tomorrow, will they?
No. We may distribute, well, I have pictures of them.
Okay, I'd like to see them.
Anyway, just kind of a fun side note. Any other comments or oral communications? Will, we don't have a closed session tonight, do we? So we won't adjourn the closed session and I'll deem this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.